The regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:07 PM on Tuesday, October 22, 2019. Good evening, everybody. I love to see a big crowd, so thank you all for coming. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left to your right, are Director Jackie Muscata-Jones, Director Kelsey Dawson-Walton, Director Jessica Craig, myself, Director Mike O'Stafi, Director Tanya Simons, Director Heather Douglas, and Superintendent Corey McIntyre. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Dawson-Walton, will you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Board Members, in front of you is the agenda. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of accepting the agenda as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes six-nothing. Next agenda item is Audience Opportunity to Address the School Board. We have three distinct groups, and I'm going to read a statement, not targeting anybody, but it's our standard statement. During Audience Opportunity to Address the School Board, I will call on each speaker who has submitted a speaker card. We ask the speakers keep their comments to three minutes. The board does not take action or discuss matters during this portion of the meeting. Speakers may be referred to the superintendent or staff if follow-up is necessary. The complete guidelines for public participation are provided on the Meeting Materials Table and on the School Board section of the district website. When I call your name, please come to the microphone and state your topic, and also state whether or not you are a district resident. And with that, we will start with Julia and Jessica Kelly.
Hello, I am Julia Kelly, and I have dyslexia. I think everybody should have a chance to get to learn as best as they can. We need some extra help from time to time, and that's okay. We need your help. Some of the greatest people in the world have dyslexia, and they still need some extra help, so please, help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
Hi, I'm Jessica Kelly, and that was my daughter. We were here to attend the School Board's Listening Session back in September, and they listened, and I think they told they'd get back to me, but I haven't heard anything back from you guys, so I decided to come back and remind everyone that October is Dyslexia Awareness Month, and that one in five people have dyslexia. Many are undiagnosed. Nearly all of identified dyslexic students in District 279 Schools do not receive the kind of help that they need, my daughter included. I have been speaking to other parents of families in our district, and our stories are all very similar. We say that my son or my daughter has the diagnosis of a specific learning disability, and we receive no support from our school. Many students are denied IEPs because the student is operating only slightly below grade level due to being diagnosed early and due to the student's ability to compensate. So that means that because my daughter is only slightly behind, she doesn't get the kind of help that she needs in school, and that's not fair. All of these students, including my daughter, work after school, more than once a week, with a tutor that we pay for out of pocket. We will never be reimbursed for the education the public school system should be providing for our disability. The students who are diagnosed later on, maybe third grade or just later on in life, they are not meeting reading standards at all and are often grade levels below. These students that are grade levels behind, most of the time are granted IEPs because they're so far behind, but they are still not getting the education that they need because they aren't given help to learn the dyslexic way. The reading intervention that these students need needs to be a results-based, proven method to help the dyslexic learner. The reading program must be structured, multisensory, and sequential in order for the dyslexic learner to benefit, or else it will not work. It'll be a waste of their time and a waste of the school's time and resources. My daughter was recently offered a reading intervention that would have been zero help to her because it is not the right kind of reading program. Examples of these programs are Orton-Gillingham, Wilson, Sunday System, and there are many more. And these programs not only benefit dyslexic learners, they benefit all learners. Anyone can learn to read the dyslexic way. What is the district's plan for handling the one in five students who will fail their screenings next year? Now, the state of Minnesota is requiring schools to screen. We're going to find out that all these kids are dyslexic, and what are we going to do? Are these students going to be sent home with a letter saying that they are at risk, but we do not have the proper educators to help? If we don't have the help available now for our currently diagnosed students, how will we have it for the hundreds that will be identified in the next couple of years? As a parent, I'm wondering how I can help make this happen. What can I do to see students succeed, to get the help that they need? This is most important for families who do not have money for outside tutoring services. The most crucial matter in all of this is mental health. These students will not only improve academically, but their mental health will improve by improving their self-esteem and confidence. Maybe they won't feel stupid anymore. Again, how can we, as a school district, work together to make an equitable education for our dyslexic learners? How can District 279 be a leader in the state for teaching dyslexic students? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Okay, next up, I'd like to ask Michelle Fisher and Mona Servo to come to the stand, please.
Good evening, School Board, Chair O'Stafi, School Board Members, Superintendent Corey McIntyre, and Cabinet Members. My name is Michelle Fisher. I'm a special education teacher at Osseo Senior High in a Setting III classroom. I'm also a district resident and have had two sons graduate from the district. I'm here tonight to put a face to some issues being negotiated for our teacher contract. As a special education teacher at the secondary level, our responsibility is to prepare our students to be college and career-ready, in addition to being independent and competent in the three areas of transition, including post-secondary education, employment, and independent living skills. We accomplish this by collaborating with the multidisciplinary team to determine each student's individual strengths and unique needs in order to write an independent education plan, or IEP, with measurable goals and objectives. The IEP is a highly detailed legal document with multiple components, and it must be 100% compliant with state requirements. Due process paperwork is a large portion of our job responsibility. This paperwork is expected to be completed during our 40-hour work week or during one selected and pre-approved due process day per trimester. Due to our block schedule, secondary staff have prepped only four days a week. This prep time is not adequate for writing an IEP and accomplishing all of our other job tasks. This process requires uninterrupted time, critical thinking skills, and thoughtful writing. Unfortunately, our prep time is used to meet many other demands. Some of these demands include IEP meetings, evaluation shares, managing student social-emotional challenges, lesson planning, parent contact, teacher collaboration, and curriculum design. It's rare for a special education teacher to be provided with curriculum. At the secondary level, we teach up to five different classes that require curriculum design, creation of reusable resources, and lesson planning. However, special education teachers are not content specialists. We are trained to be highly qualified differentiation and intervention specialists. Keep in mind that a special education teacher in a self-contained setting can have up to 10 students on his or her caseload. In contrast, a resource special education teacher has 20-plus students on his or her caseload. This can result in upwards of 40 meetings per school year. This leads me to ask you, what part of my job responsibilities should I cut? Our district's special education staff are highly qualified, competent, reliable, resourceful, dependable, and dedicated, but we are struggling.
Thirty seconds.
It's an impossible task to accomplish all of our job requirements within a 40-hour work week or one due process day per trimester. We understand the value of our student contact hours and instructional minutes. However, our teachers need you to hear their call and address the issue and necessity of both prep and due process time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, School Board, Chair O'Stafi, School Board Members, Corey McIntyre, our Superintendent, and Cabinet Members. My name is Mona Servisland. I'm an elementary Setting III special education teacher in a skills program at Elm Creek Elementary. I too am a district resident, and I've had three children go through Osseo Area Schools. I've worked as a special ed teacher my entire teaching career, starting in 1990. I've taught in two different states prior to moving to Minnesota in '95, where I began teaching in Morehead, Minnesota. In 2001, I began my career in the Osseo District as a resource teacher, split between Weaver Lake Elementary and Rush Creek Elementary. Then, when that was cut, I started a Setting III Connect Program, which is an autism program at Rush Creek Elementary, where I also worked with Michelle. I was there for 12 years, and I'm now in my sixth year in the skills program at Elm Creek, so I'm basically a veteran. I could speak to many issues regarding special ed and how things have changed, but right now, what I'm going to focus on tonight is workload and prep time. According to my contract, my prep time is 60 minutes a day with a 30-minute duty-free lunch. I never knew how fast 30 minutes flies by when you're working with kids with significant needs. Even when they're out of the classroom with other licensed staff, I carry a walkie-talkie. During those 30-minute segments, do I sit back and create six different lesson plans for each of the kids, covering their reading, math, writing, social, and functional skill needs? Much less crank out 100% compliant IEP along with the other paperwork, which is a whole nother issue? With the needs of the kids in my classroom, my prep time and lunchtime is spent listening to that walkie-talkie and responding to crisis situations. For example, I work with young children who have no safety awareness. One or more of them, when they get frustrated or for whatever reason, will run out into the parking lot with teachers chasing them and calling, "Ms. Mona, we need some help." They also have bathroom issues. "Ms. Mona, we need some help. Can you get some clothes?" Sometimes they refuse to leave where they're coming from. "Ms. Mona, can you come and get them?" And then, God forbid, a drill happens, a fire drill, a lock-drawn drill, where they're terrified and they're clinging to you with all their might, and it takes an hour to calm them down. Now, these are real situations that occur on a daily basis with the kids I love and I'm responsible for, and I take my role extremely seriously, as all the staff does in my building. But as special education teachers, we need more time to do the many other parts of our job-
Thirty seconds remaining.
-without cutting student contact time. When those kids are headed home, I myself think, "How could I have done things better? How could I have been more efficient?" But the IEPs, the paperwork, the lesson planning, the parent contact, the emails, the online trainings, et cetera, get done after school, at home in the evening, or really early in the morning, and of course, on weekends, because once that bell rings, the kids and their needs come first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mona. Next up is Amy Glasscock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Pearson, Board Members, and Superintendent McIntyre. My name is Amy Glasscock. I am a concerned parent, and I live in this school district. It has come to my attention that there is a national agenda to sexualize all children at an unnecessarily young age, and I am aware that some of these inappropriate books and curriculum are already in the schools of Minnesota. Do you know if any of your teachers have recently gone to trainings that have contained comprehensive sex ed lessons? Do you know if Planned Parenthood currently sends educators to your classrooms? Do you know if this book, "It's Perfectly Normal," written by Raubie Harris, is in our school libraries? Did you know that if a teacher was to show this book to a child outside of the school, the FBI would consider this sexual grooming, and the teacher would be breaking the law? Why is this the case? Because of the comic book style, pornographic images, and sexually explicit instructions contained throughout this entire book. My friend is going to show you some of the pictures. She made copies. And by the way, she was on the way to make copies at a copy store, and they wouldn't do it for her because of this type of material that it is. This book is an elementary-level book for fourth graders, for 10-year-old students. The message is that any type of sex is okay for them, and even good, and that they have a right to participate at any time and with whomever they wish. This may include sexual intercourse, anal and oral sex, and masturbation. There are no holds barred. Parents and other authorities cannot prevent this. This is what the word "comprehensive" means. The one rule is to have fun. This is not fun. In fact, it is extremely harmful, unsafe, and unhealthy for our children. Sex is not love, and love is not sex. It is not what is best for our kids or respecting to our community values, which we here represent What we are requesting tonight is to see all of the sex ed curriculum that is currently being used in all of the classrooms in the Osseo School District, pre-K through 12. We also want comprehensive sex ed mandate not to be passed in 2020, this spring, or ever. This will maintain the Osseo School Board's control over what is taught in our classrooms. We here do not want the children in the Osseo District to be groomed for sex while attending school in order to get an education. Comprehensive sex ed is not an education. What it really is designed to do is to be a powerful vehicle for social change. Quoting the website of CICUS, the group working with Planned Parenthood, CPAC, and the Alfred Kinsey Institute, "These groups want to change our culture using and exploiting our precious children. They are planning to mandate comprehensive sex education in every public and charter school in Minnesota and throughout the U.S. Currently, they have it in nine states. They're working on 25. They're working on Minnesota right now. We are a battleground state. We are here standing firm and to let you know, let them know, not on our watch." Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for this opportunity, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the Superintendent's Report. Superintendent McIntyre?
Thank you, Chair O'Stafi. So, a regular part of our Superintendent's Report is to share points of pride in our district. Points of Pride celebrate students, staff, and community members who are contributing to accomplishment of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. So I've asked our Cabinet Members to share with you recent points of pride from our district.
In the category of achieving dreams, six students from Osseo Area Schools are National Merit Commended Students this year. These scholars earn this scholar by scoring highly on the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. They are Maple Grove Senior Highs Katherine Badema, Abigail Jackson, Sunena Johori, Samiksha Kanakunta, and Aiden Shaeffler, and Osseo Senior Highs Jane O. The Maple Grove Senior High soccer teams each won their section championships last week. The girls' team defeated St. Michael Elbertville 1 to 0, and the boys' team was victorious over Brainerd by a final score of 2 to 1. The girls' team begin state tournament play tonight, and the boys' team plays its opening round match on Wednesday.
Maple Grove's Zoe Atkins is also headed to state in girls' tennis. Atkins won the Section 5AA Singles Championship on October 15. She will play in the state tournament starting October 24 at the University of Minnesota's Baseline Tennis Center. Osseo Senior High's Lauren Seeger was featured as a CCX News standout student on October 9. Seeger is actively involved in her school community as National Honor Society President, Drama Club Vice President, and captain of the mock trial team. She plans to study law after graduating from Osseo in June.
In the area of contributing to community, Zane Wood Community School, a science, technology, engineering, arts, and math school, is the recipient of a recycling grant from Hennepin County. Using the grant money, Zane Wood implemented a sorting table in the cafeteria this year to boost recycling and composting efforts. On the first day alone, the school reported an 80% reduction in waste. In the area of lifelong learning, Weaver Lake Elementary, a science, math, and technology school, is featured in the new video by the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Educational Technology. The video highlights how Weaver Lake scholars learn science argumentation skills through data collection.
Hope was the key message in Erin Gruel's presentation at the Osseo Area Learning Center on October 15. Gruel is the author of The Freedom Writer's Diary, a bestselling book that inspired a movie in 2007. She came to the OALC after students there read her book and wrote letters inviting her to visit. And then finally, under the category of mission-driven employees, last month, Elm Creek Elementary music teacher Liz Miller participated in her quartet at the Sweet Adelines International Women's Barber Shop Quartet Competition in New Orleans. With competition from more than 300 teams from the U.S. and around the globe, Liz and her group placed 23rd in the world. You can read more points of pride on our website at district279.org.
All right, thank you, Cabinet. So just a few additional points of pride I'd like to share. Recently, the last couple of weeks, all of our schools have been hosting their fall conferences and welcoming parents and families into our buildings to meet with staff and learn how their child's performing in school. I've been able to attend a few of our school conference events and have been very impressed with the engagement of our parents, their willingness to provide us feedback, and collaborate with our staff. And with so many staff in the audience tonight, it's a great opportunity for me to say thank you to all of our staff for the extra effort that goes into our conference events, but I want you to know how much that pays off with the connection with our families and our parents and ultimately, our students. I saw lots of students involved in the events as well, and those are great experiences. So we have a number of things in place that help our parents and families continue to learn about their child's progress and continue to partner with us in supporting their learning and growth. So thank you for those efforts. I've been working on attending our district advisory committees and attended the District Parent Advisory Committee last night, and I plan on getting to each of the advisory committees here in the near future. As you heard earlier, our fall activities are nearing the end of the regular season, and a number of our high school teams in the district have qualified for postseason competitions, so we wish all those who are still competing the best of luck. And yesterday, I had the privilege of attending the Association of Metropolitan School District Student Conference, which brought students together from nearly 50 member districts across the metro to share what the student voice would be and what they feel is their vision for education looking out the next 10 years. And the conference was completely student-planned and student-led, and the collective conversation was really centered around the following challenge: How might we design and build a school system that offers all children with an education that provides equal access opportunity and equity in an integrated environment by 2030? That's a lofty question, and it was impressive to see nearly 2,000 students wrestle with that and tell us from their perspective what they'd like to see their educational experience look like. Great energy there, and I was proud of our Osseo Area students who were able to contribute to the event. And lastly, I'll finish up with, I'm nearing completion with meeting with all of our state legislators. I've been making many visits to the Capitol and making connections with our legislators and how we can collaborate to support the students in Osseo Area Schools, and we should have those wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. So that concludes our points of pride for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Our next agenda item is School Board Reports. Director Muscata-Jones, do you have a committee report or update?
I only have one. The Policy Committee met on October 8 at the ESC at 4:30. Board Members Jessica, Craig, Heather Douglas, and myself attended. Also attending were Superintendent Corey McIntyre, Assistant Superintendent Steve Fliask, Kelly Parpert, and Patrick Smith, the Director of Business Services, Kelly Benusa, the high school principals Bart Becker, Michael Lehan, and Heather Miller-Sink, and General Counsel Tim Palmetier. During the meeting, the committee reviewed proposed revisions to Policy 510, which is school activities, and Policy 731, which is post-issuance debt compliance. I know you're all bummed that you missed that one. Revisions to this policy were required as a result to recent statutory and regulatory changes. The committee recommended that the revisions to these policies move forward for a first reading tonight, so you'll get to hear from our counsel, Tim Palmetier, again today. The committee also reviewed a draft student cellphone and technology policy that had previously been discussed during the 2018-2019 school year. After receiving feedback from the principals attending, the committee further recommended that the new policy, Policy 505, move forward for first reading at tonight's board meeting. The next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled to be held at the ESC on Tuesday, December 3 at 4:30 PM. Policy Committee meetings are open to the public, and community members are encouraged to attend. So see you there.
Thank you. Director Dawson-Walton, do you have a report or an update?
I have one. I attended the Association for Minnesota School District's Board of Directors meetings a couple of weeks ago, and we had a really thorough presentation on the census, the 2020 census coming up, and I'm just putting in a plug-in for everyone to participate in the census because everyone matters, everyone counts with this. A lot of funding is at stake right now with the census, especially with our schools, including special education, our school lunch, Head Start, some of the after-school programs. So just continue to spread the word. I think we'll probably have some more information through our district out about that. And there was a report on the residential homestead property tax burden that was, we had a thorough conversation, as well as Corey touched already, on the student-led conference. So a lot of energy around that, so it's really exciting that we participated in that.
Thank you. Director Craig?
Not smite, thanks.
Thank you. Director Simons?
Yes, so since our last meeting, we had two meetings from the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee. I just want to reiterate, the purpose of that committee is to analyze information affecting enrollment, capacity, and building use, and to generate observations and recommendations to be communicated to district administration. That particular committee is made up of staff, parents, community members, and Cabinet Members. So over the past two meetings this month, the group really began to dig into a lot of data regarding our capacity situation, looking at where we might be overcapacity in the next five years, where we might have opportunities for undercapacity, and decisions that will need to be made around that. So the last two meetings were very heavy data analytics, as that committee is charged with, and we began reviewing one out of four options that came from district staff. So that committee will continue to meet over the coming months. Our next meeting is on November 11, and they will generate observations and thoughts and feedback on the potential capacity, the options to deal with our capacity constraints in some areas of our district. And you were there, too. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
No, and I was there. Let me say, there's my update. So I was at those last two meetings also. So thank you, Director Simons. Director Douglas, do you have a report or an update?
I do. I also attended the DPEC Committee meeting last night. It was a great meeting. Superintendent Corey McIntyre came and introduced himself and got to know some of our members. We spent a little bit of time electing a new chairperson, vice-chairperson, and recorder, which is customary at the beginning of every new school year. It was our second meeting of the school year. And also, we spent a significant amount of time discussing recruitment for the committee. The schools that are either lacking representation or have no representation at all, so we try to aim for two to three people representing each of our sites. So the schools that still need representation or need more representation are Palmer Lake, Birch Grove, Crestview, Oakview, Park Brook, Woodland, Zane Wood, Garden City, Fair Oaks, Edinburgh, Northview, and Park Center. So I'm really happy there's a lot of people here tonight. If that is your school, please, please, please reach out to parents and staff members at your school to be a part of this committee. It's really important, and it really drives decision- It's really important, and it really drives decision-making for the school board, and we really need more representation at those sites. If you have questions about that, you can reach out to me, or you can reach out to Jill Laney or Jeremy Willey here at the district office. It is really important that we have adequate representation at all sites. And also, I serve on the District Two-eighty-seven Board, and our next meeting is Thursday. So at our next board meeting, I will have an update from that.
Thank you very much, and I do not have any additional updates past the report from Director Simons on the ECHMAC committee. Next agenda item is a presentation, agenda item number seven, which is Strategic Priority: Digital Learning for All. And presenting this evening are Anthony Panaros, our Executive Director of Technology, and Steve Fliask, our Assistant Superintendent, one of our Assistant Superintendents. So gentlemen.
How many technology guys does it take?
Good evening, Chair Ostaffi, Board Directors, Cabinet, and guests. I'm excited to have the opportunity to launch our update this evening on our digital learning for all priority work this year. It's been a busy, busy spring and summer, and now moving into the fall, so there's a lot going on. And so tonight, you're going to hear a little more. Anthony's going to share several important highlights from our work session on the eighth, and really how all this all works together in terms of alignment with our priority work. So from your outcomes, as you can see here, we would like to stress again the work alignment with our plan that's now in Phase Two, which I'll speak a little about in a second here. This is all stemming from our priority work, where our students will experience learning that is personalized in path, place, and pace through strengthening our teaching and learning. And so on the eighth, again, and hopefully a little bit tonight, and the work that's been going on, that you're going to see the underscore under our teaching and learning, really our efforts around strengthening that. So as far as the big idea of the plan, it really remains that this priority work, if this priority work is to move forward, it has to impact learning in ways we want. So our focus is on supporting pedagogical practices enhanced by our technology must deepen and expand. We believe technology is one of the many classroom tools that show tremendous promise for extending the walls of our classrooms, but it's not the goal in and of itself. It is that tool, but it's rather a means that we can move the work forward if we're really going to strive for a twenty-first century learning environment for all of our students. So as you can imagine, this work has really required us at the district level to rethink how we train and support our teachers, collaborate as district, integrate this new technology, and how we connect with all of our stakeholders so that we may better understand how we're serving the needs of all of our students. This beautiful graph here breaks down our phased work. We're really proud as we're moving into Phase Two. As you can see here, we've successfully implemented both at the high school and we're currently in the middle schools, so we've moved that technology forward, as well as provided the professional development that is really requisite for this to be successful. So again, Anthony's going to share some more details around those critical tasks that are happening in our middle schools. And also, as we move into this phase, you'll see in Phase Two, you're going to hear a little bit more about our work in piloting, what that plan is going to look like pre-K through five. Now, we've learned a lot as a district in doing it in our secondary schools, but we do know this, it's going to be much more complex and involved, and so we're excited with the work, but we know that it's going to be important work that we have to make sure that we're connecting with as many of our stakeholders. So we really understand where we want this to go. So that pilot is going to be critical over the next few months. Also, too, you're going to hear a little bit about our promising practice work. I know, or you heard some of that details during our work session, and I would encourage anyone listening, if you want to take a look at on the board book, you'll be able to see some more of those details, but some of the promising practices that have been going on here and how we're starting to connect this critical work with what's happening in terms of outcomes in our classrooms, and some of the high-leverage strategies that we've been uncovering. So as I said, just to kind of cap before, hand it over to Anthony. Tremendous amount of work, a lot more to do collectively, but we're excited about where we're at. Anthony?
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Board, Superintendent McIntyre, Cabinet, and community and staff. Excited to continue on the conversation of what has been happening around digital learning for all, and again, to reemphasize what Steve said, this is really some high-level recap of a really good conversation we had at the last work session that got into some great deals, details of the work that we've been going through for the last couple of years. Specifically, want to kind of focus on what is happening this year in the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year related to specifically this strategic priority work. So there's kind of four big bucket areas. One is kind of at the pinnacle of this, is our focused implementation at the middle school level. And so far this year, we've trained all of our middle school instructional staff, who graciously gave up some time during the summer months to come in for a half-day of training to really look at the device that was coming into the middle school and learn how to engage that through instructional pedagogy within the classroom. There will be continued ongoing professional development happening with our middle school staff throughout the school year through very targeted opportunities that are built into the middle school staff development calendar. The other piece that's going to continue to go on with our focused implementation at the middle school is I, along with the Assistant Superintendents, our digital integrationists and leadership teams in each building, monthly go into each middle school, and we do learning walks within the classrooms to see what is actually happening and ask questions of students and staff of what's working and what's not working, for that continued collaboration and partnership to ensure that the resources that we're bringing in and the outcomes that we're trying to achieve through our digital learning for all plan are successfully being met and implemented throughout our middle school system. The next bucket that we're really focused on this year in the nineteen-twenty school year is flex learning days. So as we navigated several weather closures last year and what that meant for our system, we had a great conversation last spring about the legislation that allows for e-learning days within school districts to address continued opportunities of learning for students due to a cancellation of an inclement weather day. Earlier this year, I believe it was July-August timeframe, we did a presentation at the board with more details around our flex learning days, but we are prepping up and gearing for our winter weather season and the implementation of what this might look like. So there was initial communication that went out to all families and staff in August. There will be another round of communication going out to all families and staff in October, and as we continue to gear up closer for those potential weather-related days. Professional development is in the works and getting ready to be rolled out to middle school and high school staff coming up later in October here. And we're ready to dive head in with what this is going to mean for us this year, and we're going to learn some things. So again, it's about continuous improvement as well here. The other thing that we discussed for our nineteen-twenty aligned work in DL4A is our Osseo Excels Academy. So this is our first dive into online learning opportunities, in particular for high school students. We're starting in particular with Osseo Senior High as kind of a pilot model group to ensure that we can develop rigorous and relevant engaging curriculum that meets the needs of students in an online environment. As we implement this, Osseo Excels at Osseo Senior High, we're going to kind of learn from the practice and the implementation and see what that looks like for a further implementation across our district. But another great opportunity for our kiddos to learn in a variety of ways and getting access to courses depending on different schedule flexibilities or different scenarios that students may encounter, in particular at the high school level, for what that learning could be. Our last big bucket in our nineteen-twenty work is really our DL4A elementary study. And as we may have many elementary colleagues out in the crowd here, some of you have seen me come out to your buildings or heard me coming out to your buildings. So a few of the steps that are going into this study are collecting a variety of data to understand our elementaries, where they're at, and where we are going in the future with elementaries. The elementary study in particular is kind of broken into three study questions and areas over the course of the school year. So one of our studies in this group or in with the elementary is our technology study, so trying to understand what technology resources best support students at the elementary level, and again, looking at it through a lens of pre-K through five. So our initial digital learning plan that came out in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, around there, about six years ago, really looked at fourth grade through twelfth grade and developed a one-to-one model around that and resources aligned to that. What we're trying to do in our next iteration is really look at this comprehensively, pre-K through five. What does this mean for our youngest scholars to our graduating scholars? Our instructional study is really looking pre-K through five, and how do we actually integrate and provide resources in the classroom, and how are those resources being used to help excel our young scholars at the elementary level? And then the last big question we're going to wrestle with is screen time, and what does that mean from a developmental perspective with our youngest scholars, even all the way up through our high school kiddos? When we look at the research and stuff that's on there around screen time, in particular what American Pediatrics Association discusses, there's a lot of focus around the entertainment screen time and limits around entertainment screen time. That study has a paragraph in there that says there is high value for educational screen time, and they leave it at that. So as a K-12 institution, we're going to spend some time grappling on what does educational screen time really mean and how does that impact our learners throughout our system? Through all this, we've been, again, continuing to gather observations of evidence of what this looks like in our system. In particular, at high school and middle school, we have our focused implementations going on right now. We're working on building teachers' capacity around how to design instructional strategies around path, place, and pace, and providing a definition and meaning around what path, place, and pace actually mean in our system. Our instructional strategies that we work with teachers on and provide professional development on are aligned to our CLEAR model, which is really about culturally and linguistically relevant pedagogy within our students, so how do we engage all learners? And then really, opportunities for students to develop their four Cs. As we were revising our digital learning plan, engaging with community members and industry leaders around what is the skill sets that our kids need when they leave Osseo Public Schools, they really talk a lot about they need the soft skills around collaboration, communication, creativity, and critical thinking. It's less about how do I use Microsoft Office or a Google platform? Because technology platforms change, employers see that that is a skill set that they can train on the job, but having a student or having an individual come in and ready to collaborate, communicate, create, and critically think within their system is highly valuable. So looking at how are we developing those skills with our students from pre-K all the way through twelfth grade? When we talk about our digital learning look fours, so Osseo Area Schools has used path, place, and pace for personalized learning for a very long time. Over the last year and a half, we spent some time actually putting definition to that and working with our staff to help develop professional development to define what does this mean? Also, working with our building leaders, so what does it mean for me as a leader to help support my staff on designing lessons around path, place, and pace? So you can see here in this slide kind of what we call our digital learning look fours. So when we're engaging leaders and we're engaging staff and developing professional development and talking about these terms, this is what we're building that framework around, which then leads into what instructional strategies might look like. So we might hear things like flipped classroom, or playlist classrooms, or how we integrate Schoology, and it's not really about a flipped classroom, or a playlist, or a hyperdoc. It's about how are we creating lessons and activities that are designed around path, place, and pace around these look fours? So different classrooms can look and have good variability in how teachers engage because they know their students best, they know how they're going to learn, and for some teachers who do use something like a flipped classroom one year, they get a whole different group of students the next year, that's not the best strategy or route to go, but can still develop appropriate lessons that help create that environment around path, place, and pace, and personalized learning. So digging into the data, we'll talk a little bit about the promising practices, but just to give some background of some variety of data elements. So I'm always a big proponent of collecting multiple data points rather than a single data point. So as we continue to look and evaluate our digital learning model and continue to do continuous improvement and make modifications, we have a few different data points that we're bringing in. So one thing that will be occurring at some point this fall is a technology assessment by Filtered Ed. It's be very traditional to what we saw maybe three years ago when we used to do a traditional technology survey, how are these being integrated, what is Wi-Fi access at home, how are students using the technology? So we will be doing a comprehensive assessment around that to bring in some data points. Last spring, I brought in some user data around our high school implementation. In particular, we can pull in a whole multitude of data through some of our tools now on how students are actually engaging with the tools. So really showing that the tools that we brought in at the high school and will be looking towards at the middle school level are really being designed and used by students for educational purposes. And then the last data point that we discussed extensively at the work session, which was exciting, our L&amp;A, Learning and Assessment Team does an annual Promising Practices Study. And this last spring was the first time we kind of aligned or looked through that Promising Practices Study to identify what specific elements in there are related to our personalized learning initiatives or work with DL4A. And what we started to gather out of that, and some of the key takeaways that we got is when we look at results and success of students in the classroom, we're finding a very strong correlation to the strategies that we're working with teachers on and providing professional development on. So what we noticed through that Promising Practices Study are kind of these two key takeaways, in particular at the high school level, which is where we had focused implementation and ongoing professional development, that we saw greatest difference between what we classify as high-growth teachers versus low-growth teachers. What I would say is students that are, or classrooms that are demonstrating high academic success versus classrooms that might be seeing a little lower academic success. And the correlation with that is teachers, what we saw who were implementing the practices designed through the digital learning for all study and for the professional development and the tools that we're working with teachers on, were having a higher or greater success within the classroom as they implemented those with fidelity. So it's a good indication that we're on the right track with the direction that we're going. We still have continued work and support with staff throughout our system to continue to build this capacity and the success for all our students with our personalized learning and digital learning for all models. Next steps for the board and the community to be aware of is, again, we're going to have our continued ongoing professional development at middle and high school. The system staff development days at the high school are actually focused on personalized learning this year, so our digital learning coordinator is working very closely with our secondary curriculum coordinator on developing, when we have system PD around that personalized learning and those strategies, so that there's continued support for teachers with what we already started last year. We have, we will be developing a recommendation for our work at the elementary level, which you will see coming back to the board, on what does the elementary framework look like moving forward, as well as what you'll see later in the spring for refresh of technology and what that may look like if we go through an RFP process, there'll be some steps that go along with that. And then we will continue to review data and inform the impact around our digital learning for all goals. Again, it's always about continuous improvement, collecting that data, engaging with staff, engaging with students, and getting the feedback on how we need to change and adjust as we continue to move our work forward. Thank you. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Anthony. Let's start with Director Muscata Jones, if you have any questions.
Anthony, I just want to say thank you for all your work, and my question is, can you name like one or two things that you've gleaned in the last, you know, in your visits with the elementary schools?
It's hard to quantify it. You know, the listening sessions have been really good, and I've been to, I think, eight sites so far, including Willow Lane, so we are, you know, including our pre-K programs. I've got Arbor View coming up on Monday. And how technology is used is very varied. And one of the things that I'm working through and learning, and one of the things I uncovered as I came into our system, is our elementary schools are very different from one elementary to the next elementary, and what technology resources they actually have access to. So we, as a district, provided one-to-one technologies down to fourth grade, and then learning and achievement provided additional carts of technology to the third grade throughout our system. And then depending on building funds, compensatory funds, PTOs, grants, we have some elementaries that are close to a one-to-one model, and some elementaries where what we provided from a district level- from a district level is all they have access to. So it's hard to kind of land on what is a single theme yet. We're still working in that data gathering arena to look at what is going to be our, the best strategic move forward to provide equitable and sustainable resources across our system for all our students and staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Director Dawson-Walden?
I have a question. I just wanted to comment that, you know, during my short tenure on the board, we have spent a significant amount of time really discussing our digital learning for all and on the different components. And I just wanted to say I really appreciate Anthony and your team. I think it's been a really thoughtful approach. I think we have some really exciting technologies as well as opportunities to Excel Academy that, you know, I really appreciate just all the work that's gone into it.
Thank you.
Director Craig?
Just a quick comment. Thank you so much for you, your work and your team. It's quite the operation, year in, year out, collecting the devices and then distributing them. So I was very impressed to see that at the last work session. Just feedback from my middle school student. She loves the Chromebooks, prefers them over the iPads. And they've done some really great, like, reports and teamwork between the students. So that's been fun to see as a parent. So just great feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, the learning walks, I've gone through a learning walk with each middle school so far and it's been fun to sit down, engage the middle school students. And most of them are very enthralled about having the Chromebook. And the handful of kiddos so far that I've engaged that said they prefer the iPad, you know, I asked them, tell me a little more about that. And then I asked the question, which one do you prefer for doing schoolwork? Oh, the Chromebook by far, so. That's been quite interesting and entertaining.
We're focused on, right? Thank you. Let's go to Director Douglas.
Yes, I have a couple of things I'd like to say. Thank you. Anthony and your team, thank you very much for all the hard work that has gone into this. Deploying, collecting, managing, all of the devices in itself is a lot of work. But what I feel like is a more important piece of it is the path, place, and pace concept and really solidifying for our staff what that means and how to use the device in a positive way. As you know, technology use in the classroom is a concern that I have. I don't think that we should be using only technology, and that's my personal belief. But knowing that we're doing a study to see how screen time is used in an educational setting and seeing that we have, you know, teachers who are implementing the digital learning for all practices with fidelity are seeing greater growth is really encouraging. And so I really appreciate that information and the work that you guys are doing to bring our kids up and increase their grades and have better outcomes, because that's ultimately what we're here for, so.
Yeah, I would emphasize again, as we launched this revised plan and as Steve shared the big idea, the focus and emphasis is really around that creation of personalized learning with path, place, and pace, which sometimes that you can create a lesson without any technology use that is meeting those strategies and goals. We really see the technology as a valuable resource in the hands of kids and teachers to create a whole wide variety of different opportunities that couldn't be engaged without it. But definitely, the focus and emphasis is around that learning environment.
And anecdotally, my children also prefer the Chromebook to the iPad.
All right. Director Simons?
No, I just echo everybody's gratitude for the work that's being done. And as we talked about the work session, I really like to see the maturity of this kind of technology deployment and integration process to really be focusing on, you know, how do we want to use this? Where is this best going to be used? So the study timelines is going to be really helpful and I'm excited about that, as well as the data mining and the promising practices. So just tons of exciting work here and I'm looking forward to all of what we're going to learn and where we're going to go next. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just wanted to make a comment and then a question. Both Steve and Anthony, since you guys both came on board two, two and a half years ago and took this role on, we've made significant progress from where we were. We initially was the fun shiny object and we've gotten well beyond that. And I want to thank you very much for that hard work and listening to the board and how we want to continue to take things forward to use technology to sport and improve, not to have it as the cool little shiny object. And then I would like to know a little bit more about how are we going to further embed and train our teachers on those promising practices that you shared at the work session last week or two weeks ago that clearly showed that there was direct correlation between utilizing these practices and improved performance of our students? And that's going to be key.
Yeah, I would say the professional development is twofold. And one of the things that we were very clear, what came out very clear and was a center point in our conversation of launching the revised model is what does professional development look like and making sure that it's not a one-and-done? So my understanding, when we first launched our digital learning plan several years ago, we handed out iPads, we provided a half-day day training to staff, and then we provided a lot of great opportunities, but they were optional opportunities. And for teachers, when you have a lot of priorities, whether it's a new math curriculum or a literacy curriculum, you might really want to do professional development around digital learning, but there's other priorities that might steer you in a different direction. So we've been working very hard, Andy Bado, our coordinator of digital learning, as well as our core planning team, of talking about how do we look and work with other areas, our staff development and assessment specialists, and integrate those strategies into the greater professional development we're doing. So if we're talking about a math strategy or a literacy strategy, how does that look from a lens of the strategies within the promising practices and the DL4A alignment to continue that embedded, continuous professional development?
And also, I think, critical to that too is how we're supporting our leaders. And so, as I had said at the beginning, a lot of this work has forced us to really think differently about how we're using our time. So Anthony has been working with the principals, mentioned the walkthroughs, but also at our professional development, making sure that all these things are surfacing up. So our leaders are aware of it so that they can feel supported in that, being that instructional leader in each of their buildings. So that's also a critical component that we're going to continue to make sure we have that focus in front of our leaders.
Thank you. Board members, any additional questions? Thank you very much. The next agenda item is agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda. And board members, are there any items that you would like to remove for separate consideration? Is there a motion, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
So moved.
There's a motion? Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? I would like to just comment for people who don't read through all of these details of everything. Basically, we are approving minutes and financial reports and grants, many, many grants. We are approving personnel changes. We are approving field trips and fundraisers and some contracts. And we're also this month approving working, submitting to the Hennepin Youth Sports Organization on behalf of Omega to help get additional funds to improve our ice arena. So many different things that go on that we've all read and we've discussed it in the past. So is there any other discussion, comments, or questions? Just wanted to do that for information. So, oh, yes, Director Douglas?
I just, would you just clarify that the grants aren't, that's, we use the word grants, but that's not exactly what that is?
That's true. Some are grants, but some are actually, if it's coming from the state, many of that is actually part of our funding package. It's called a grant on how we have to take care of it from a financial accounting purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, all in favor of accepting consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes six to nothing. The next up are action items. So the action item on tonight's agenda is only one, and that's the fun one, is to accept gifts to the district totaling $60,664.34. Is there a motion to accept gifts to the district totaling $60,000? Oh, this one says $564. So one of those two, $564, $664, and $0.34. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Thank you. We graciously accept. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes six-nothing. Thank you. Next up are the informational items, which are first reading of the policies. And Mr. Pomateer, will you please provide information about first readings of policies 731, 510, and 505?
Thank you, Chair Stoffey, School Board Members, and Superintendent McIntyre. There are three policies, as was indicated already on for first reading tonight, policy 731, policy 505, and policy 510. I'll start with policy 731, post-issue and step compliance. This policy was brought forward for review and revision in order to come into compliance with SEC regulations that went into effect in February of this year. Essentially, the proposed changes to the policy and corresponding procedures address new continuing disclosure requirements in the issuance of municipal securities. And I apologize that it's not more exciting as was indicated by Director Muscata-Jones. Policy 510, student activities. This policy was brought forward for review and revision because of the amendment to Minnesota statute that requires the school board to take charge and control of extracurricular activities, and this includes the financial accounts for such student activities. The new policy and procedures require and ensure that the applicable student activity accounts are managed properly and in accordance with the Uniform Accounting Standards, commonly known as UFRs, for those of you watching at home. And lastly, policy 505, student cell phones and technology. This policy was originally discussed by the policy committee in the spring of 2018-19 school year and was held over to obtain additional input from principals this fall. The policy was developed in response to periodic reports of concerns about occasional disruptor or improper use of cell phones and other personal technology devices in some of our schools. It's intended to establish reasonable expectations and restrictions on the use of cell phones and other technologies that can disrupt the educational environment or impinge upon the privacy interests of others. First reading begins a four-week period for reaction to the proposed policies by concerned groups and individuals. After a four-week period, the school board may adopt any or all of these policies after a second reading. The proposed revisions to these policies are available on the school district website with the agenda for tonight's meetings. Comments on the policies discussed here tonight may be directed to the school board or myself. Comments on these policies may also be provided online through the school board policies and procedures webpage located on the district website.
Okay, any questions? Start here. Director Douglas?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Director Simons?
Any questions?
Director Muscata-Jones? Director, Director Dawson-Walden? Director Craig?
I just have a point of clarification. My paperwork says policy 610, so I just want to make sure that we are in fact talking about 510.
Thank you. Yes, it is policy 510, student activities.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, I just want to mention that the student cellphone and technology policy was heavily discussed, but if there are any people that want to weigh in, please access that via online and weigh in with any recommendations or advice. Thank you.
And I have, on 505, I mean, we've gone back and forth and I've raised some questions. I would like the audience, you know, everyone in the room and those listening and watching, two things to take a look at. One, being able to use cell phones to capture any evidence of any policy, civil or criminal infractions and not be punished for it. That's not clearly spelled out that that will not be, that will still fall under the non-ability to use the cellphone for doing that. So I want to make clear that if somebody's capturing something in that regard, that there's protections. And also, you know, taking a look at some Fourth Amendment issues around the ability to demand search of a student's phone. So everyone can, you know, may have different opinions on that, but I would like people to take a look at those and bring comments forward. Thank you.
And I would just like to add that we did discuss those at the policy meeting.
Oh, yeah, no, I just called out those are two very important things.
Oh, yeah.
And with that, thank you, Mr. Pomateer.
Thank you.
Let's see, our final agenda item is adjournment. Before we do that, I just wanted to mention quickly that our next meeting, November 5th, has a listening session, a session. It's at Osseo Senior High Forum Room and it's from 5:15 to 6:15 p.m. on November the 5th. So please come and be able to bring, we'll have an hour for us to listen and discuss any topics that are important. So with that, our final agenda item is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second? All in favor to adjourn, say aye. Aye, opposed? The motion passes and we are adjourned at 7:12 p.m. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate everybody you can for coming.